... 19th
..................................................................
The first on the agenda is tax rate hearing. Mr. Joseph?
Yes, every year we have to do calculations through the state auditor's office to set our local tax rate. And if you look in your board package, you have the legal notice that went out in the paper. It should've gone out, it was in this past week's paper. And what you'll see there is that we, by our calculation, can set our levy for the general fund at $1.871.6. Special revenue fund, $1.18. Debt service could be as high as .6331 cents. And then we have no levy in the capital project. We have for years had an agreement with our community that we will not increase the debt service levy. So therefore, we take a voluntary rollback on that. Instead of the allowable amount that the state auditor's office says we could have of 63-plus cents, we roll back to 26 cents. So therefore, when you take that all together, our total levy is $3.311.6, okay? That would generate, if all taxes were collected, $11,506,24. But we don't live in a perfect world, so they're not all going to be collected. We will get some lesser amount than that. But that is what the maximum that we could generate from that particular tax levy. This was a reassessment year, though for our district, it was a very low reassessment year. About a 1%, just over 1% increase. So that's actually pretty small for us. If you look at the rest of the pages that I included, you'll see the calculation that is used by the state auditor's office to determine that levy. And they have already seen this and approved it. So this has actually already been through the state auditor's office correction process. So I asked the board to set the tax levy at $3.311.6.
That's per assessed evaluation.
Yes.
Any questions?
It's one of the lowest in the area, correct?
It is definitely one of the lowest in the area, yes. We have traditionally been, we've bounced back and forth between the lowest in the Jefferson County, Perry County, Cape Jackson, and St. Francis County. Either the bottom or the next two or one or two above that, up and down, pretty regularly. We don't have anywhere near the taxes that some of those school districts do. We're very fortunate to have a strong assessed valuation. Our local economy and our local business and property base is very strong. And so we're very fortunate in that, and that allows us to keep our tax base low.
I move to set the operating levy at $3.051.6, $3.051.6, and the debt service level at .26 cents for a total levy of $3.311.6 for the 2013-14 school year. That's hard to read.
Yes, yes.
Motion in the second, I'll favorize an eye.
Aye.
The fold, motion carries. Next is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for the August 19, 2013, regular meeting as presented. Second.
Motion in the second, I'll favorize an eye.
Aye.
Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
I move to approve consent agenda items as presented. Second.
Motion in the second, I'll favorize an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, next we'll have the report of the superintendent. Mr. Joseph?
All right, start with the notes of sympathy and thank you that we received. We want to point those out to you. And then, I think if we would, Peggy, you want to say a word about your brand-new bridge?
Oh my gosh, I would love to.
You love drawing a bridge?
Yes. Have you had a chance to drive by yet and look at it?
Yes.
It's a great, it's a great piece of work. I mean, it is top-notch. It's total concrete along the bottom, so what the children walk on are concrete. The sides are open, and the top is a white metal roof, and they chose that to tie in with the surrounding area. When they finished, they sawed it all around it, and now we're in the process of keeping it watered. Yeah, it sawed it, that was so impressive. But it's a great thing. I went out this afternoon when the kids were out, and even in the hot weather, it's a shady place for them to stand. So it's nice. It's big and wide and wonderful, and we can't thank them enough for what they did. Holson donated their time and their effort on it and put it together. They were out working in the rain, so they did a great job. We're real happy with it.
Maybe they worked with PTA.
Yes, they did. PTA contacted Holson about the project, because this has kind of been on the PTA kind of list for years to do something out there. And a couple things have been tried, but Holson came along and said, "Oh yes, we will do it." And so yes, they did, they worked. PTA is the one who got the ball rolling on that, so very nice, very nice.
Yes, we certainly appreciate Holson stepping up. And about the time they decided to build the bridge, it decided to rain for, you know, many, many days in the road. And literally, those guys were out there working in the rain. And so we really appreciate the guys who are out here. We appreciate Holson being a good neighbor and a good community member and supporter of our district in fixing that up for us. I was talking to Dorcas Grass this morning, and she said, boy, this is, she was doing Brady this morning, I guess. And she said, "Oh, this is wonderful." She said, "Last year, I was thinking this thing's getting a little rickety, getting slick." And she said, "I was afraid kids were going to slip." So yeah, it's very nice. And if you haven't been out there yet, you definitely need to go out there. But please wait until we catch the skunks. We have a family of skunks who are living under the steps down to the 4th grade playground, which is right near the bridge, you know, around the corner from the bridge. And so that's part of the superintendent's report tonight, is that we have contacted Mr. Soltowski, and he is on the job. And he says that he has 100% success rate, but he's been fighting these little skunks since Friday when we discovered them. So the 4th and 5th graders have been watching out their window as the baby skunks roll and play and frolic and have the big time. And so we're still working on that, and we're doing recess out on the track for the 4th and 5th graders. Just to be on the safe side. So anyway, you know, you never know what to expect, whether it's wasps in the tires or underneath the drums out of Bloomsdale on the playground, or it's skunks under the steps. It's just always interesting as you start school that, you know. So anyway, enrollment is the next thing on my list here. We had enrollment, and these are pretty fluid numbers, folks, because, you know, when you look at the first day of school, you have people that, yes, are still on your rosters but have actually moved and haven't requested records yet because the school they're going to hasn't started yet or whatever the case may be. And so, you know, this will fluctuate. But on the first day, our enrollment was 1,874, and last year at this time, it was 1,883. If you would like a breakdown by building, Bloomsdale is at 316. That's down from 329 last year. St. Jen Elementary at 486, up a little bit from 475 last year. Middle School is at 440, down 6 from 446 last year. And High School is pretty steady, 632, and it was 633 last year. So that's where we stand with our first-day enrollments. Maintenance and housekeeping, really, we kind of already covered that with the bridge and the skunks, so we'll move on. You have a copy of the teacher in-service. We had a really good speaker that was very, very thought-provoking about internet resources and free things on the internet to use for instruction, textbooks and things of that nature. She did a keynote, and then she also did breakout sessions in the afternoon. So she was really, really good. Then we had other things going as well. And so all in all, though, a very, very good day. I'm going to, at this time, let Dr. Lindsey talk to you a little bit about what we've done with safety and introduce our new staff member.
We'll start with the introduction, actually, of our new school resource officer, Christine Clark. She's joined us tonight. She has experience both in law enforcement and with children's division. And she recently completed her school resource officer basic training through the National Association of School Resource Officers. And we've got her uniform taken care of, and she's qualified with firearms.
Been out here a long time, I'd say.
Got her an office lined up here in this building. We have a place in Bloomsdale for her to be as well. And she's kind of getting acclimated to the district and learning where things are and those sorts of things. But we're very pleased to welcome her into the fold and become a part of the St. Jen family. And I don't know if she would like to address the board and say anything for her.
Just kind of give us a little bio.
Yeah, a little background.
Just a little bit of background.
I graduated from Arcadia Valley. What do you put bio on there? I graduated from Arcadia Valley in 1998 and went to college, got my bachelor's degree in criminal justice and psychology. I have associates in administration, business administration. I moved to South Carolina. My current husband now, we just got married June 1st, he went to the golf academy down there. So that's kind of why we were down there for about five years. Moved back about six years ago. Kind of wanted to get back into law enforcement, but didn't really want to work the road. I wanted something different, but I didn't know what. I started working at the children's division. I was based out of St. Francis County, and of course, the circuit covers four counties, so St. Genevieve was one of them. So I've been to the schools doing investigation hotlines. Always liked the community, always liked the staff, you know, the officers down here. So I worked there. Then, it's a lot. It's a lot of on-call, a lot for one person to do. But I absolutely loved working with the kids and the families when I did work there. This position came open, and it was right up my alley because I loved law enforcement and I loved working with kids. And it's just a combination of the two. So I thank you all for supporting me in this position. I think both of you, you've, you know, helped me with a lot of stuff. And all the principals, assistant principals over here, I know Mr. Mercer's not here, but him as well. I mean, they've all came to me, "Do you need anything?" I mean, down to staplers to, you know, sticky notes. I mean, everybody's been great, you know, the nurses, the custodians, maintenance. Everybody has been wonderful at this school. Chief Bennett, you know, I've rode with him a couple days before I went to training. He was excellent, you know, he's got, he met me in St. Louis. We went and got some of my uniforms and my vest fitted. So I just want to thank everybody for, you know, because I'm not from this town. And I know, coming from Ironton, you know, it's a small town, and sometimes outsiders are looked at different. But, you know, in Ironton, we always welcome people, and we didn't mean anything by it. It was just kind of like, what is this? It's kind of like Andy Griffith's show down in Ironton. But you're always welcome, you know? And that's, you know, so it was a little nerve-wracking coming in, you know, to a town that I'm not from. But everybody just came to me with open arms, so I want to thank everybody. And I thanked elementary for my first day of dealing with the skunks. It was like, every time I walked into the elementary, it's like, oh, we have a little problem. And I'm thinking, here's the elementary! I'm going to walk back down the hall now. But I did see them out there this morning. I checked, yeah. So that was, it could have been puppies, where I could have went out and just grabbed them. You know, that'd have been easier, but that's my luck, so. But anyway, thank everybody. I don't know if you have any questions for me about anything. Thank you. I'm trying to get out to Bloomsdale as much as I can. I've been out there almost every day. I didn't get out there today, but, and I don't really want to get on my schedule because I don't want someone to get to know that and then, you know. So I've been trying to get just up and leaving, go out there, you know. And Chief Bennett and I have talked about, I do have a police radio and I have a school radio. We're going to try to combine both of them. But with this being a new position, things were kind of, you know, it was a lot at one time. And I, you know, I'm glad, that's okay. But it's one more thing on my belt, really. But anyway, so I do have, I talked to Chief Bennett, like, so I'm, I don't call dispatch and let them know, "Hey, I've arrived at work today and I'm leaving work today." But I do check in with Chief Bennett, and he checks in with me. You know, our agreement is that if I do go to Bloomsdale School, I'll call him, text him. That way, he knows that his officers may have to be here because I'm not going to be able to get here that quick. I know when I was out at Bloomsdale Friday, there were some county officers walking around out there. And I'm totally fine with that, not stepping on my toes whatsoever, because it is a lot of ground to cover. You know, but I am excited about it, but I'm glad that they're, they're out there doing that as well, so.
We have some very awesome officers, both city and county, so I think they're all.
Yes, yes.
Anything else, other questions or comments?
Well, great school, a great place to work.
Yes, it's been wonderful so far.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and we may hold you here. Feel free. Because I know you'll be back here really early in the morning, so. Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Do you want to give a little update of what we've done security-wise and where we are with the problems?
Yeah, one of the things that we found out is that there were a lot of school districts that were making safety and security upgrades this summer. And so we really had difficulty at times getting companies to come here to look at our situation, to even put together the information to submit bids. We got through that process, selected what we wanted to accomplish, and we're still waiting for them to come and do the installation and that sort of thing. Because there's just so many school districts that are doing much of the same things that we are doing. We do have some of the, or maybe all of the surveillance cameras up. We are still waiting on the key card access things to put in as well as the buzz-in procedures at the main entrances. So I think Keith harasses them every other day or so, trying to find out, you know, when are you coming, when are you coming? Some of the other things, smaller things with some of the adjoining classroom door locks, all that's been taken care of. We're in the process of numbering the exterior windows to coincide with the floor plans and classroom numbers. We're in the process of doing that now. So ball's rolling. It's just, it's taken a little bit more time to get through some of these things than what we thought it would just because of its volume. So, but it's all in the works, everything that was approved in the plan earlier or things that are being implemented, it's just taking a little more time than what we thought it would.
So the numbers, what does it mean, numbers?
Yes, yeah, that was one of the recommendations. So that, you know, if we have some sort of a, an event here at school and we have a fire department or whatever that's here, they can see the outside, they can take the floor plan, which is very helpful if they're inside the building. But the outside just looks like a bunch of windows.
As I say, the fire department wanted to get a copy of the floor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, actually, they already have.
They already have floor plans, yeah.
Yeah, they already have copies of the floor plans with classroom numbers. This is just something to put on the exterior of the building so that they can identify which room is which.
For some of the work that has been done, how much, or is it less?
It's really kind of hard to say because, you know, when, once the company that does the exit bars and that sort of thing, once they get here and start the installation process, that'll go pretty quickly. So, you know, I would say that we're more than 50% there with the titanium count, school resource officer, the additional surveillance cameras, those kinds of things. So we still don't have a feel for when that company's going to show up to actually complete the installation.
Is there, is there open doors during the day yet?
No, all the doors are, I mean, the front main doors are open right now because, I mean, they have to be because we don't have the buzz-in system yet. But all the rest of the doors are locked, and we're encouraging teachers to keep their classroom doors locked. And, you know, they can have them open if they wish, but keep them locked. And the principals have taken care of, like, there's doors in their buildings, like at the elementary school, for instance, that don't have a handle on the inside, that we've got handles there. They've done some other things, trying to purchase some materials that we were shown in our training last spring that help with the security of the classrooms and getting those out into classrooms and things of that nature. So, you know, we're taking what steps we can take and have things as much in place as we can. You know, the numbers, I would say probably within, what, a month? Is John?
Yes.
John Otto's making the numbers for us, and so we'll get those on pretty quick. That shouldn't be too much longer. And then, you know, we're kind of at the mercy of the companies that do the installation of these other things, so.
I hope they're positive comments of the community, so I thank you. First of all, I know we talked about getting the SRO in place by the time school started, and it is. So greatly appreciate it.
We'll move on to unfinished business, the annual performance report. Mr. Dr. Lindsey gets that one.
You have at your place a copy of the final APR. It is hot off the press. It was just published today. It's not available until later in the week for public consumption, so to speak. I think it will be released to the media maybe tomorrow and then embargoed until Friday. So they, at that point, it would be truly public information. So you're getting kind of the first peek at the APR. This is the final APR. They released preliminary APR a couple weeks ago. They gave us an opportunity to look things over and check for corrections that need to be made. We did find one thing that there was some data that was missing. We got that sent in, and they accepted it and made corrections in our final APR. Just kind of a little bit of review before we actually get into looking at the APR itself. This APR is significantly different from what we've had in the past. And this is part of the change due to the fifth cycle of the Reserve School Improvement Program. With MSIF V, there's a greater emphasis on academic achievement, both overall academic achievement and then also subgroup achievement. There's a greater emphasis on college and career readiness. You'll see that as we kind of get into this a little bit, things like ACT scores, dual credit enrollment, after-graduation placement, those kinds of things. Significant change in the attendance calculation. The standard now is that you have 90% of your students that are here 90% of the time instead of an overall attendance average. So overall, the accountability part is much more rigorous. And part of that is because the targets that they want us to achieve and that are built in the new APR are really where they want us to be in the year 2020. This ties in with the whole Top 10 by 20 initiative that Desi is promoting. And basically, the idea is, is that when you reach the 2020 targets, if all the districts in the state were to get to that level, then the state would be in the top 10 states in the United States in those particular measures. So they've set those targets really high. And basically, you can be already at the target, which is, again, seven years in the future. And in many cases, we are already at the 2020 target. Then you can be approaching the target, and so there's different levels there. So the point of all that is that it's much more difficult to get to the highest, get to the highest level.
So the areas where 100% is not what we're talking about?
Excuse me?
The areas that we're at 100%, is that the metric?
No, not necessarily, because there's two or three ways you can get there. And I'll kind of get into that here in a minute as well. As you all are aware, long history here at St. Jen of accredited distinction. You can see the things that are displayed on the wall to recognize that. Just wanted to emphasize and that the, there will be no accredited distinction for the next three years. So it won't be until the 14, after the 14, 15 school year. And that's not just for us, that's all across the state. It's a designation that's going away because they feel like with this new APR and the new fifth cycle of MSIF, they needed three years of data. And it's so radically different from what we've seen in the past that there will be no accredited distinction recognition until after the 14, 15 school year. One thing we do know is that one of the requirements is that you have 90% or higher of the available points, okay? There's also some mystery criteria that still haven't been decided yet that they're working on and should determine in the next couple of months. So again, that 90%, though, is kind of the key network to shoot for. Last year, you might remember, we had a practice APR. Basically, they took the prior year's data and applied it to the new system. It wasn't our real APR. Our real APR was just like we'd always had and showed that we met every standard, 14 out of 14. With the practice APR, then we got 86.4% of the points. So we knew there were some things that we needed to take a look at. Part of it was just kind of getting used to the new reporting system and understanding what it was that they were asking for and the way that they were asking for the information. So based on the final APR for this past year, we scored 93.2%, and this, keep in mind, this is the first year that counts in that three-year cycle that will be used for accreditation purposes. So extremely pleased with that score. You know, I think it will, it's going to be way above state averages and those kinds of things. So I think that that's a real credit to students, to faculty, to staff, to the building administration for providing leadership. And really excited about that news and think that's a really positive thing for the district. If you want to look at your handout, the front page, as you can see, shows on the left-hand side over there that we got 130.5... uh, shows that on the left-hand side over there that we got a hundred and thirty point five out of a hundred and forty possible points, uh, for a total of ninety three point two percent. Okay? Uh, it's broken down into five major areas, standards, academic achievement, subgroup achievement, college and career ready, attendance, and graduation rate. Uh, all of those areas, uh, we performed very well. If you flip to the second page, uh, it breaks it down a little bit further and gives a little more detail. Uh, it shows that, uh, with academic achievement, we got ninety two point nine percent of the points. It breaks it down by core area. Uh, same thing with subgroup achievement, uh, it shows that we got eighty five point seven percent. The college and career ready, the first, uh, the three point one to three, that's ACT, ASVAB, SAT, those kinds of things. Uh, the middle one, the three point four, is advanced placement, international bachelor laureate and dual credit, uh, along with, uh, technical skills attainment, uh, test scores. We'll go into that one. And then the third one, uh, is placement. Uh, and that basically has to do with, uh, post-secondary. So after students graduate, then they go to a two-year college, four-year college, military, those kinds of things. Uh, our attendance, uh, we got, uh, ten out of ten points on attendance. And our graduation rate was very good as well at, uh, ninety five percent of the points, uh, that were available. And all that equals out to a ninety three point two percent rate. Uh, I'm not gonna go into all the detail on the next several pages. Uh, basically, as I mentioned before, uh, three years of data go into determining, uh, these, uh, levels and whether we get the points. Uh, on the academic part, there's three ways to get points. One is called status. And basically for status, they look at your scores and they take a three-year average. Uh, and if that is above certain cut scores that the state has set, then that determines what, uh, what number of points that the district receives in each of those areas. Uh, you can also get, uh, points for progress. And progress is basically like taking this year's fourth grade, for example, and comparing it to last year's fourth grade. So if we get some movement, uh, in those scores, then we get some bonus points, if you wanna call it that, for making progress. Okay? Obviously, the higher your academic achievement already is, the more difficult it is to make progress. Okay? Uh, the next, uh, way that you can earn points is through growth. And that would be like taking this year's fourth grade score and comparing it to last year's third grade score. So in other words, it's tracking basically the same group of students. Okay? So it's a totally different kind of measure. Your to- total overall score, your total points earned, uh, is your status score or your three-year average plus either progress or growth, whichever one is higher. Okay? And it goes into detail on, on all of those, uh, things for academic achievement. Uh, and then also for subgroup achievement. Uh, the subgroup achievement is, is somewhat different. I won't get into all the details. It has the exact same requirements as far as cut scores go. Uh, but, uh, uh, we're talking about, uh, subgroups that are made up of, uh, black students, Hispanic students, uh, students that, uh, receive free or reduced lunch, IEP students, and English language learners. Those are the five subgroups, uh, that go into the subgroup achievement. Uh, and again, we did very well, uh, with, with those students, uh, as well. Uh, if you'll flip to the next page, uh, again, the first part, ACT, SAT, COMPAS, ASVAB. Uh, the data's all there. I'll let you look at that if you have questions, you know, feel free to, uh, feel free to ask those. If you'll flip over to the page that has the little green triangles on it. This may be, uh, the most important page out of, out of everything, uh, or representation anyway. Uh, basically, if you have, uh, a box that's blank, then that means your student scored somewhere between the bottom ten percent and the top ten percent. So in other words, you're in that middle eighty percent. Okay? If you have a box that has what I call the little crooked mustache, uh, I think it's actually called a tilde, uh, but, uh, then you didn't have enough students in that subgroup for it to trigger, uh, a percentage. So in other words, that subgroup was less than that third. But if you have a green triangle, and, uh, of course, we all like to color green. Uh, but if you have a green triangle, then that means that you're in the top ten percent in the state in that area. Okay? So if you look at the middle school, uh, both math and science, uh, math scores were in the top ten percent in the state. If you look at the high school, uh, both ELA and math were in the top ten percent. The thing that I think is, uh, pretty amazing is if you go down to the line under subgroups that says IEP, our IEP students in ELA, math, and in science, top ten percent when compared to all IEP students in, in other school districts across the state. That's pretty impressive.
And you, this is why.
Yeah, it's really, it's really a testament to, uh, to colleagues' leadership, uh, in, in that area.
It is.
Another thing to be proud of, free reduced lunch, again, green triangles. And then total, math and science, top ten percent, uh, in the state with subgroups. So, uh, really, really impressed by the number of areas that we had where we scored in the top ten percent of all schools, uh, all districts, uh, in the state of Missouri. I think that just reinforces, uh, what we already know. Uh, that is that we have a great school district, uh, that we have great teachers, great building principals, uh, great leadership, and most important, great students. Uh, so all those are, are really, uh, good things. And then the last page, this is something I wanted to show. Uh, this brooks, breaks it down by building. And, uh, if you go all the way over to, and you can look at all the numbers and, and basically, it's each standard. Uh, of course, some of the standards, like graduation rate, doesn't apply to the elementarys or to the middle school. So some of these things don't count and they have an asterisk in there. But if you go all the way over to the right-hand column, uh, remember, the standard is ninety percent. Every one of our buildings is above ninety percent. Every single one of them. And the high school really stepped up and smacked it out of the park at ninety six point four percent. So, uh, really kudos to all of them. Uh, every building, there's not really a weakness, um, in, in any of those areas. Uh, kinda to summarize, basically, you know, it shows that we're doing a lot of things right. Uh, and I kinda, you know, looked at some things, uh, even individually by building. We have consistently high scores in math and science. Uh, we have improved scores in ELA and social studies. Uh, improvement in three of the four core areas with our subgroup achievement. Dual credit course enrollment is extremely strong. Uh, every building has something to celebrate in addition to the, uh, being above ninety percent. Uh, Bloomsdale had significant increases in ELA scores. Uh, St. Jen Elementary, the science scores increased. Uh, the middle school, math and science scores remain very strong. Uh, high school, uh, again, uh, and this was something that, uh, I didn't point out earlier, but high school was the only building with the maximum points in all four core areas. So they had a hundred percents, uh, in all four areas and, and that's, uh, that's outstanding. Keep in mind, twenty twenty standards. And we're already there in many, many cases. So, uh, really pleased with the APR. Uh, again, like I said, uh, you know, it's a reflection of the leadership this building's, a great, great job that the faculty and staff do. Uh, you know, kids that, that are just great kids. So, exciting news, I think.
Talk about a good meeting. Yeah, oh my gosh. Okay, we move to new business. First is the amended budget, Ms. Joperson?
Yes, and, uh, we couldn't do all of that wonderful stuff if our community wasn't supportive in, in, uh, funding what we do here and entrusting us with those tax dollars to, to maximize everything that, uh, we possibly can get out of each penny. And, uh, so, you know, we, we try to do that. Um, this year, we, because we've been building balances for the last couple of years and we haven't been giving any raises and things like that, we did do raises for this, this year. It's the first time, this is three years now and the first time in that three-year period that we've given raises. So, uh, that raises went, uh, across the board to both our certificated staff and our support staff. Everybody got a raise, so, uh, we're very pleased about that. Um, we also, in this, in this, uh, budget, we have paid off our lease purchase, which was one of the, uh, funding methods that we used for construction projects in years past. Uh, that was paid off, the last payment will go in March, so, uh, we're very glad about that. It's kind of like you're paying off your mortgage, a little bit like that, but only a mortgage on part of your house. We still have mortgage against the rest of the house, so. Yeah, we, we've paid off the garage, I guess we should look at. Anyway, uh, we did do that, so we're very pleased about that. And obviously, as, as we've seen tonight, we have added the, uh, school resource officer and included all of her expenses except for, uh, her equipment, which I did wanna point out that the city, um, chief, uh, has, has put that in his budget to equip her with her, uh, firearms and, and whatever else and to also be responsible for her training and qualification and all of that. So really appreciate Eric for, uh, stepping up and helping out with that. Um, then, uh, we've also added the alternative school program, which is something that, uh, I know our middle school and high school, uh, administration has been in dire need of for a while now. And, and I think it will be one of those things that helps us to, uh, improve our average daily attendance as we move forward with this MSET process. That's gonna be one of the things that we continue to look at. And as I, I spoke with many of you earlier, uh, one of the things that we have to notice is that our enrollment is decreasing here at St. Jen. And so anything we can do to, uh, improve average daily attendance numbers, we need to do. And so this invest, this budget invests in a way to do that by, by having an alternative system where we don't suspend kids outside of school. We try to keep them here, whether it's for behavior reasons or if it's because they're, they're behind in academics. Uh, we've, we've got that process started and I believe Wednesday, we will start with kids in there. And, uh, some are there because of some past behavior issues. Others are there because of past, uh, achievement type issues. So, you know, it's, we got, we're helping on both ends there with that graduation rate that will be, you know, continue to be important as well as the attendance rate and our average daily attendance overall, which drives our state funding. Okay? So that's important and that's being supported, uh, by an investment in this budget. As you, as we've talked about, our security upgrades, all the cameras and the, the bids for the work that'll be done to do our access control for outside doors and any, all of the rest of it that we've talked about, uh, is a part of this budget. Um, we've done a couple of other things with, uh, some software to help us with record keeping. First of all, the only system in the whole district that was not, um, automated was health services. And so if you go into our nurses' office down here at the middle school and high school, right in the middle of the room, there's a table. And on that table sits eight or twelve black binders. And that's where all the student health information is. So they would actually have to page through and find the kid and add to, you know. So, um, we've bought some software to help them to become, uh, a little more into the digital age and find their information more quickly. Uh, and in any, you know, wherever the kid is on campus, that information then can be accessed whether, you know, we don't have to have somebody sitting down here in this office to page through that book and, and look for that kid's information. So, uh, that's a positive. The other thing is digitization of our, uh, student, all of our student records, drop records, school board records. Um, there are certain records that we must keep forever and, and forever's a long time. And it can mean a whole lot of paper. Um, so the, the Secretary of State's office for years did a grant that allowed you to convert all that paper to microfilm to store in a much more condensed fashion. And so, uh, we did that for years. But now microfilm is a thing of the past, as many other digital storage things, uh, are. And so our microfilm reader is dying and basically, once it's gone, we will no longer be able to look at those records. And so it, it was time to, to make an upgrade. So we've set all of our di- our microfilm to be digitized. So we've purchased some software so that once that's on our server, we will be able to access that very quickly. Ms. Roth, our registrar, will be able to find those records that she needs without having to go through that antiquated system. Uh, not only that, but, but we haven't done, um, school board records, the minutes of your meetings, for probably twenty years or more. Um, they're, they're just sitting in paper form in district office in a closet and... So, you know, some of these things, we're really kinda behind on. So we purchased some software and we're gonna, we're going to, uh, rent a high-speed scanner that will take care of that, that backlog of paper onsite and then convert, and also do that conversion of microfilm. So that's in this budget as well. So that, once we're finished this year, hopefully, it will be a very limited annual process of doing student records, ord records, drop records, one year's worth at a time, rather than twenty years' worth. So, um, I think that will be going forward for the district. I think that's gonna be really, uh, a vital investment that you're making here. Um, we also had a large tech going to, uh, rent a high-speed scanner that will take care of that, that backlog of paper onsite and then convert, and also do that conversion of microfilm. So that's in this budget as well. So that, once we're finished this year, hopefully, it will be a very limited annual process of doing student records, ord records, drop, actually, the nation, if you will, to settle on the common core state standards, what they were gonna be and, you know, how we were gonna adopt them and what that was gonna look like in Missouri. And, and so we pushed back our curriculum revision, which meant we pushed back our core textbook purchase for, for several years. So, you know, there's gonna be a, a comeuppance on that and then you finally have to bite that bullet. So, uh, we do have a big investment in that. Not as big as it would've been if we were buying all hard texts. We did a lot of, uh, stuff, I know the high school was really good about doing as much, uh, free stuff as they could and, and, uh, so we've got online versions of things which are a little cheaper. Next year, we'll do science and social studies. And the, the presenter that was here, man, she lit us up with free online texts for every science class you could think of and history classes and things of this nature. So when you're looking at a, a science textbook, instead of being, when you get the textbook and it's brand new, it's, the, the information is already a year to maybe two years old because it's had to go through the process of publishing and being edited and all that and put together in an actual book. Free online means it's current. It's, it's the most current data. So, you know, that, down the road, that's gonna be eating away at that investment that we have to make every year in textbooks, okay? Then we're, after we do science and social studies, you're gonna see another drop because we don't have a core area for a little while then. We've done all four of them in two years. So then we'll just be looking at electives and, and hopefully, you know, again, really being able to convert to free online, uh, versions of things in our electives. So there'll be a few years there where we won't have a core adoption and then we'll just go back to one at a time on the, um, core areas.
Do a realign or?
Yes, we'll, we'll get our little chart fixed back up. We've had a major discombobulation of the chart. But we'll, we'll get that all back in, in shape so that we're back to our five-year rotations of things. And, uh, at that point, you know, we're projecting out into the future a, a good, probably five years now. I can't imagine that anyone will still be buying, and especially middle school and high school now. Elementary, you're still gonna have print stuff. But, um, you know, I think when you look at the crystal ball, five years plus down the road, uh, this is, this is kinda gonna be where we are. So, um, really helpful to keep chipping away at what we're investing in textbooks and, and instructional materials there. So, uh, and then, of course, we, we've talked about HVAC repair. We've talked about, um, the new parking lot, uh, out at Bloomsdale. And then, uh, we had, uh, we had to redo the chlorination system out there in the lagoon. So, you know, there, there are a lot of other things that are part of this budget as well. it in, in good shape, all right? So questions or comments or anything on the budget?
I think she's doing a great job.
Thank you, ma'am. We, just so that the public knows, the board members received their budget books, what, a week or more ago?
Week.
And I sat down with each one of them at the time, and, you know, kind of reviewed things, and they've been able to ask questions since then. So please don't think that I'm giving them, you know, a budget book of this size, and they're just, in five minutes, going to approve it. So we definitely, they have all spent time and due diligence in looking through that and asking questions and all that kind of thing.
Any questions or comments?
I don't feel Mr. McStallner better, he did this last year. In reading through this, if you want to, you can go ahead.
I've got lots of thunder, I just.
There's about 70 pages that I assume the building administrator put together of successes and accomplishments throughout the year and achievements, academic, athletic, and otherwise, in addition to the, you know, the packed building last year and everything that's gone on, the debt books, and some other things behind the scenes like teacher evaluations. Man, a lot got accomplished, so thank you all very much.
A lot of positive accomplishments. Too often, we hear the negative when there's so much positive out there, folks. There's so much positive going on, and those things, like you said, they reiterate what you're saying. Anybody want to read those accomplishments? We've got copy. You'll be available.
There are copies. The budget is the district office, and it does have a section by each principal about the things that have happened in their buildings, and I would urge anyone and everyone to come and take a look.
It's amazing. What happens so much in a year, even a couple of years, if you're at the bottom, it's going to take this long to get there, all because what that takes here. We have a lot to be proud of, imagine that one. Okay.
Move to approve the amended budget as the budget for the 2013-2014 school year.
Motion in second, Alvin, press the aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the reservation to support bill of HB 253.
Okay, we have before us, coming up in September, when the legislature reconvenes for their veto session, we know that there will be some challenge to the governor's veto of House Bill 253. That is the bill that you're seeing some ads for out there with veteran and several other folks and a cute little girl in the end that says, "Stop kidding, start growing." And so it's really hard to say, oh, you know, tax cut for the little guy is a bad thing, we should veto that. But it is a bad thing. It is a no-win for schools particularly, because in an already underfunded environment, it would take more funds away from the state's coffers, and that would, in fact, cost us about $250,000 and change, once that's fully implemented. And to increase that, if the federal government passes the Marketplace Fairness Act, which is a taxation on internet sales, et cetera, that would trigger an even bigger cut in state tax, state income taxes, and that would be about, we would probably see about $450,000 loss on that. So this is something that the governor knew when he first saw it was not good for Missouri. It's very much modeled after the Kansas bill that was passed last year for tax cuts, income tax cuts, and business tax income cuts. And so if you look at what's going on in Kansas right now, you see that that has triggered for them large sales tax increases to make up shortfall in the income tax. So while, and that, I mean, that's traditionally what happens. If you decrease income tax, that money has to come from somewhere for public services. Well, the other place that you raise money within a state is a sales tax. And so while the income tax benefits those who have lots of income, the sales tax really hits those who have lower income, because that's going to generate a sales tax on medication, and that hits people who are on fixed incomes, our senior citizens, anybody, of course, who's on meds of any sort, and all of our public services. So this is something that the Missouri Association of School Administrators and other school personnel, Retired Teachers Association, all of the teachers groups, active teachers groups, have all banded together and are stepping out, saying that this is a negative and that we need to support Governor Nixon and uphold that veto. So we have a resolution here that I would like to read for the board and ask that you approve. Whereas House Bill 253 would undermine our state's economy and quality of life and make Missouri less attractive for business investment, and whereas House Bill 253 would reduce state revenue by more than $800 million, and whereas House Bill 253 would jeopardize the ability of the state to provide adequate funding for our public schools for years to come, and whereas the foundation formula for funding public schools is already underfunded by approximately $600 million, and whereas House Bill 253 would also jeopardize the ability of the state to fund higher education and other critical state services, and whereas Missouri already has one of the lowest tax, state tax burdens in the nation, and whereas House Bill 253 is a fiscally irresponsible bill that would threaten the credit rating of the state and increase borrowing costs for the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the St. Genevieve R2 Board of Education on this 19th day of August hereby urges the General Assembly to sustain the veto of House Bill 253. If you all approve this, then I will send a copy of this with a cover letter to our legislators. I will also, at that point, send Toby a article in support of this, and I really appreciate the Herald printing the letter to the editor earlier. I appreciate that a bunch. So we have some other information in here as for other reasons to oppose House Bill 253. So if you have questions or comments that you'd like to make?
If I had enough money, I'd give me a little kinder, or a boy or girl, and I'd put him on television. I would say, "Don't take money from our schools," just like that one that you gave to, the same thing. And I've got figures here that I've taken off those sheets. If it goes through projected impact on, Farmington, be over $1 million, Perryville, be over $450,000, ours is $252,000. That's in our representative area. That's it on the low end. And if you go to our senate district, where our senate district, taking about 18, 19 school districts, it's over $6 million on the low end. So a lot of these schools, they bank on state money.
Yes, we're very fortunate that we don't depend so heavily on state monies, but other schools, Perryville, just to our south, is almost twice as dependent as we are.
That's projected impact on the low end.
Yeah.
I hope people get educated about it and really understand what this really means.
I know the governor is speaking again. I believe the public is welcome Thursday over at MAC at 6 o'clock, 6:30, and in the north campus center.
All the way around the back, you know, vice versa.
So any of you all that want to go, we'll kind of make arrangements for that when we're done here.
I know this bill originally didn't have a trigger, and now it has a trigger, and I've heard some talk about that, it will help, but I believe the trigger would have even triggered, for lack of a better term, in 2009, a poor economic year, and if this bill, if the veto is overwritten, then I believe it takes an amendment to the Constitution to get back to this.
Yes, I believe you're right about that. I mean, it's a major deal to go back.
So.
I think we should all know what we said, don't go. If you take taxes from somewhere, it's got to come from somewhere.
Right, right. And, you know, decreasing the income tax is very favorable for the rich. It's a very small decrease for the average.
Median income.
The median income, it's a very, very small decrease in income tax, and it would be completely wiped out by the increase in sales tax for food and medicine and, you know, everything that you need to run a household, so.
Gas.
Gas, yes.
Yes.
It is a very deceptive cut, because that funding has to come from somewhere.
And if education, the final, is over $600,000, underfunded this, and it is compound situation?
Right.
I move to approve the resolutions to uphold the veto of House Bill 253.
Motion in second, Alvin, press the aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the Board of Education, on a closed meeting with closed record and closed vote, following the regular open meeting of September 16, 2013, held in the RW Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, St. John, Missouri, for the purposes of discussing and voting upon the following items. Legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, per promoting particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, test and examination materials, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, specifications for competitive bidding and shall approved by part published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants, first one, records protected from disclosure by law, records relating to invisible hotlines established for the reporting of abuse and wrong good, confidential privileged communications with an auditor, existing or proposed security systems, structural plans of district property, records that identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transact. I further move the notice of this meeting and the tentative agenda to be posted as required by law.
Okay. Eric, okay, you've got a motion, second, Roque, Airbuzzer?
Yes.
Kevin Gobler?
Yes.
Charlie Brother?
Yes.
Colin Dantick?
Yes.
Patrick Lee Sinker?
Yes.
Eric Woodblow?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven oh.
I move to go to closed session with a closed record and closed vote after short break.
I have a motion in second, Alvin, press the aye. Opposed? Motion carries.